I don't watch baseball. I didn't want you to scratch.
This regular meeting of the Lou Ray Town Council will now come to order. Will you please stand and join me in a moment of silence? And as we mourn the loss of Todd Kellison, I'll ask that you keep Todd's family and friends in your thoughts and prayers. Last councilman Sowers to lead some of these.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Danielle, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Dofmarch. Mr. Vickers?
Here.
Ms. Lillard?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Do we have any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
Yeah, I want to offer just kind of a amendment to the agenda. We, in the short-term rental discussion, the phrase affordable housing is used. And since we weren't really talking about subsidized or anything of that nature, I would like to substitute that with housing affordability, which I think gets more at what we were talking about.
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't have a problem with that. I'll second that motion.
Second.
To make that change.
Okay.
And that's on the work session minutes, to be clear.
Okay, on the work session. Jason, do we need to? Oh, call vote on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, put seconded through the motions and seconded, any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, can I ask a question first if the dates are right? I see it says May the 8th. Should it be June?
Correct.
Yes, sir. June 12th and June...
Well, Senator, I move to approve the filing consent agenda.
June 12th and the 27th.
Minutes of the regular council meeting, June 12th, 2023, and minutes of the work session, June the tw-?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, 2023, and the accounts payable for $307,554.38.
Actually, that should be $441,383.05.
Then let's go with that.
Second.
Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Okay, we have no one signed up to speak. Any citizen comment period? Anyone here to speak? All right, moving on. Presentations. PACA, Community Volunteer Coordinator? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all so much for allowing me to speak today and present. For those that don't know me, my name is Taylor Alger. I was born and raised here in Page County and got away for a little bit and then kept coming back and then got away and then kept coming back. I moved back officially in September of 2022 and I've kind of hit the ground running. And in my time just trying to network and collaborate with various nonprofits and organizations, it didn't take long for me to see that there's a lot of people doing really, really great things, but none of them are coordinated, none of them are working together. So you have someone over here doing something that could help someone over here, but they're not connected. So I kind of connected with Bo at a nonprofit council meeting and he presented his idea and then we joined forces and it's been really growing and moving. So do you want to add anything?
Oh, can you move to the podium if you don't mind? Thank you.
Mayor Council, so I've sent a, talked to a couple of you guys over the last year and a half about, and gals mainly Stephanie, and about trying to coordinate all the nonprofit organizations in Lou Ray and Page County as a whole. One of the problems I had seen as law enforcement was that I'd see a lot of nonprofits come and asking you guys for a handout or money for donations and the struggles of seeing what this, what's this nonprofit doing versus what's this nonprofit doing? How much is this one helping the community versus this one? And then also seeing the need that giving more of a hand up instead of a hand out and holding who we're actually giving, some checks and balances and vetting the process, which I think you heard a little bit last month about United Way or Unite Us, which is a process where each individual that we're helping, and I'll let her explain this a little bit more, is entered into a system. So Joe Smith comes for help, he's entered into a system and all the nonprofits can see who's helping and what's being given to Joe Smith from many, many different avenues of resources that he'd be getting. So with all that, I'd, not just me, but input from different communities that do, that do similar to the same thing, some structure different, I started trying to figure out what would be best work for Page County and we're kind of unique in our own. So with that being said, I did a presentation at the nonprofit council and then at the school and we did a roundtable. And Taylor had a lot of the similar ideas and other people in the community and we kind of started putting it together with the school board and Dr. Fox and what's the other lady's name?
Casey Owens.
Casey Owens, and she built a network page of all, and there's a lot of resources out there that if, once you put them all on a piece of, on a page, you can realize we do have a lot of resources. It's getting these people that need help in that right direction and following up with them to continue to get in that, in that help. So, and it goes always from, for employment opportunities to housing opportunities with landlords who are willing to help out, maybe waive the first month's rent to, if there's accountability of helping, she's, I don't want to take her for glory because I actually had a success this week with it. So I'll let Taylor keep going and get from there.
All right. Yeah, so as Chief Cook said, you know, we're really just trying to find a way to weave together what already exists to make it more efficient, to make it less work and less burnout. But also, you know, we want to stop people from taking advantage of the system and make sure there's some accountability while also making sure people aren't falling through the cracks of the system. All right, Mr. Burke, you can go ahead and scroll. So I think we've already spoken to this, but what we're trying to do is take all these need-based resources and put them into one centralized space so they kind of funnel through one position, one entity, which starting out, you know, that would be me. And then we find a way to put it into this database and continue to track it. Go ahead. All right, so from the creators, I don't know why my picture is right there in the middle. So we would like to organize PACA, which is the kind of beginning of where this is being birthed. PACA, which is already an alliance, it's already a network of nonprofits and different organizations. I'm currently employed by them, so they got us some additional funding and have been able to give me at least 10 hours doing this coordination work. So I started on Monday and we've already worked to, I've gotten someone a job. I'm working, they're going tomorrow and they're likely going to get place and housing, they are living in a motel. So it's already kind of working. We would also collaborate with various nonprofits, including Living Legacy, Strength and Peers, Choices, Page One, and as well as all law enforcement, social services, businesses, employers, farmers even, you know, food access is a big thing here, and then just small business development. So if there's someone who has a great skill, but they don't have the knowledge or understanding of how to build that skill to potentially create their own business, we can connect them to resources like that as well. So I'm sure a lot of you have lived here a long time and know the cycles that we see here in Page County. So a big thing, you know, is drug and alcohol addiction. We see that from issues with mental health, from generational cycles and trauma. We see it from, you know, kids being exposed to something, you know, very young and then they just kind of get hooked and it starts from there. There's also a lot of unemployment and that could be from lack of skill, lack of motivation. I know a lot of kids that I've worked with, you know, mom and dad get that check in the mail every, every week and, you know, that's, that's all I have to do is say my back hurts, you know, and then I can get that check as well. So really trying to build skills, build motivation and kind of break that cycle of I don't need to work or I don't, you know, trust people, you know, all of that, just really building community through that. And then of course poverty, we have very high poverty rates here in Page County. And again, that's generational. I think that, you know, it just cycles and cycles. A big thing that we also see that we found just in the beginning of this is recidivism, which is, you know, reoffending, being in and out of the system. We don't only see that cycle with individuals, we see it with their parents, we see it with their children, we see it with grandparents, and so it's just passing down without intervention. So the way that we would do this, one is building relationships. My background is in psychology and mental health and trauma and something that I've learned very quickly is things only move at the speed of trust. If you can't build that relationship, if you're not genuine in wanting to understand where people are coming from and how they got where they are, you're not really going to be able to help them because they're not going to open up to you. So what we would do is really just connect with them. We would do an intake where we understand their story and what resources they've used, what resources they need. And then we would start to kind of collaborate and reach out to the organizations, one that they've already worked with and that they will be needing assistance through. I've developed an intake that has a whole list of resources from housing, as Chief Cook said, to substance abuse support, to employment support. If they've gotten support from churches in the past, we're documenting that. And then what we'll do there is this incredible system. And if we could get every organization in the community to use it, we probably wouldn't need this position. But as we work to that, what it is, it's funded through the state of Virginia. It is HIPAA compliant, so Valley Health and different organizations are actually being incentivized, is that a word? Incentivized to use this system and it's a referral. So you, as Chief Cook said, you put in the client's information, you send a referral, let's say Page One, Strength and Peers. They will get the email that goes directly to them to say this person needs help with this, this, and this. And then they can either accept that referral or they can say, oh, no, you know, we're too busy, we're maxed out right now, and then send them to another resource. And if someone comes in and needs food assistance, it will populate all of the resources that are local that provide food assistance. In the same vein, let's say I refer someone for transportation multiple, multiple times and we keep seeing we have no resources for transportation. It will generate a report to show that is a gap in our community, we need more resources for transportation. I think I'm trying to, I think, I think I got it all with that. And then also, I think what we're looking at, because I know it's hard, everyone's overwhelmed, everyone's overworked, it's a lot of paperwork. And so with this position, as we get people to connect to this database and get educated and trained on it, I can be that referral system so things get kind of sent through me. So I know where the referrals are going and I'm tracking that and sending those out. So it's not initially additional paperwork for any organization. So how does this work? I've explained it a little bit. So we have individuals who are struggling, struggling with, you know, plethora of things. They would get referred to me either by another organization or through the police department, the judicial system. They would come to me, I would do an intake with them and again, identify what resources they've used, really come up with a strategy plan. So what are your three to five goals? How can we help you achieve these? And then what we'll do is I will, at the beginning, it will be very intensive. So I have a couple of families right now I've started with that can attest to this. I will call you every single day and bug you and ask you, did you apply for that job? Did you call that person I told you to call? Did you, you know, go and make that appointment or do you need help with that paperwork? I will come and help you. So making sure that there's follow-through and accountability. And then what I would hope to see is that as individuals start to really get that, that leg up and they start to get on their feet and they find success in this program, they can move to various phases. So maybe that daily contact becomes weekly contact and then it's monthly contact. And then ideally, once these families really find that success and that the system works and it works for them, they can kind of become mentors to those who are more in that intensive phase and back in phase one. So in a way, it kind of works like the drug court where we phase, but then we also offer that support. So we build a network and a stronger community because, you know, I've spent a lot of time learning how recovery works and how substance abuse works. And one of the biggest things that helps people find success is having a community and having a support system. So we're building that through these organizations, but then even beyond that. Okay, so why does your community and your organization need a coordinator? I think I've said it, you know, I think we have amazing things that are happening here in our community and now that it's just here and here and here and here and here and we really need to unionize that and bring collaboration and allow these families to know that there's someone and there's people out there that are working for them. And I really emphasize that, that, you know, I'm working with these organizations, but I'm working for these people and for these families. And yeah, all right, continue. Okay, I cannot read that from here. So what, there's a lot of statistics that, you know, show the rates that we see in our community from poverty to overdoses, to unemployment, uninsured. And, you know, what this really speaks about is that cycle, is when there is nothing out there, when you see the same thing and there's no intervention, you don't know that you have the possibility for resilience. You don't know that there's potential for you to really, you know, have someone that's going to be there for you because a big thing in our community is the culture. There's a lot of pride here, there's, people don't want to get help. I think that there's like a residual effect of families that were pushed off the mountain and they don't trust, you know, institutions, they don't trust people that say, I'm here to help you. So we're hoping to heal that and mend that and show that it's okay to get support. And, you know, something that Bo and I have often talked about is being very mindful and strategic of where we place this. You know, if we were to put it under the police department, unfortunately, people have had those negative, you know, interactions and they're not going to trust something, you know, from the police department. Or if you were to work for local government or for even certain nonprofits, there's a lot of stigmas here in this community. And they, they go very deep. So, you know, really just trying to kind of understand those stigmas and break them from, from the ground up.
Next question.
Yes, please.
One on the left, is that percentages, 25%?
Yeah, um, yes, yes.
25% of the population of Page County is overdose mortality? That seems awfully high.
25% like as far as families, I don't know, I don't know what that...
Yeah, that might be a little, it's a little not accurate.
I imagine that one's probably maybe 25% of the users, but not the overall population of Page County.
We're actually pretty good at this, I don't know where she got that stat.
Yeah.
It could be multiple things too. I mean, a person could be more than one, I think.
Right, and in a lot of times when people overdose, that doesn't necessarily, well, that does say mortality. So, yeah. Yeah, which is great.
Well, that's just, that graph confuses me.
Yeah, it's, we'll have to go back and look at that. Thanks for pointing that out. I had some help against... That is true and it's constantly changing.
Yeah, but like not just overdose.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did want to ask about the statistic that's cited at the top, which is Page County holds the highest rate of reoffending in Virginia. Is that just for rural counties or is that just in general, we have like the highest recidivism? Oh, okay.
Yeah. And that was a study that was completed by the Cooperative Extension, I think in 2020, I believe, maybe 2021. And they found, you know, Page County has, yeah. Okay, so again, it's, it's going to take, yeah, people will always say that it takes a village, but really it's weaving a village among the village. It's all the people that are already coming together to support, bringing all of them together. And I think in order, and by doing that, we help people connect to better and see that there's potential to get through, get past, get over, get beyond. Okay, so this is an old, this is the older version of the presentation. So what can you all do? There's many things. Of course, with supporting, so as I previously mentioned, PACA is helping us begin to get this position started. That funding is only good or applicable through May of 2024. So as we're, you know, looking to kind of build this, you know, 10 hours a week, I did, last week I'm combining it with my other position and I was well over 20 hours with what needs to be done and that was with two families. So there's, there's a lot, it needs to be a full-time job, it needs to be a full-time effort. But that's also supporting and referrals and letting people know that we're doing this and identifying the gaps that you see of where this could be stronger and how we can do better. Also volunteering, you know, if you all have another organization that you're affiliated with that you think could benefit by utilizing this, please let us know. Anything else you want to add?
No, just one thing too, we were, one of the time, the religious organizations as well into the, to the network with a lot of their resources, with transportation, buses, what have you. And we're trying to get them on board with entering Unite Us, but we had, we know it's going to be a struggle. That's why the coordinator position is going to be a big plus. It's more, I think we're at, right now with Page One and Lois retiring, this is the opportunity for us to really, I mean, Lois was a saint, she did all that, but she ran a storefront, she moved furniture. This is a position in an office space that we as law enforcement would be a big benefit to. We can send people that we, we see are need directly to this, this person and then she can network throughout the, but we're fortunate still that we are a small community and we pretty much know everybody that needs help. I can tell you, if I put all my officers together just in Lou Ray, we know who's, who, who needs it. It's just mainly of getting it together and I don't want to be harsh on the one side, but it's a lot of houses we go into, there's food stacked to the ceiling of canned food. They don't need the food. I'm not saying don't quit, keep donating, but they're manipulating the system. And it's basically, I think if we streamline and utilize our efforts, we could help more people in more ways by organization of it.
Yeah, absolutely, and I know...
Questions?
Yes, please.
Does the system work in your county, in your community?
Yes, yes. So we actually received, so I, we're signed up with PACA and I'm signed up with Living Legacy, which is the nonprofit with the REC Center. And we received a referral from Green County for someone that needed a food, food assistance, which, you know, the programs that we currently have only serve Page County, but we can, we can go out. And I think that's a huge one, especially when it, there's a lot of providers that are in Winchester or Harrisonburg. So that's what we were talking about is working with the churches to get a van, you know, to say we're going, you know, this time, this place and be able to take people.
Speaking, okay, that's great, I appreciate that. Knowing the amount of effort and work it takes to build those relationships and to dig in and walk beside people, how are you going to, how's one person going to do that?
Right.
Are you looking at this long-term, in the short-term, you're going to be doing intake? And long-term, it's going to be like you're going to enable these different groups to do the intake?
Yes, I think, I think starting, and I think it's, it's going to have to grow. It's going to have to either break off and become its own nonprofit or build more positions under PACA. But I think initially, you know, I do have an upper hand right now because I've been building these relationships for the past several years. So I have connections to a lot of families from the REC Center and with the Port Visit Program. So we're able to kind of start with, that rapport's already built. But as it builds, yes, we will have, we'll have to expand. Yeah, it's, it's case management, you know, ultimately, but we also have this database now which can track and support that, which is, is great. And I think as, as Bo said, that's what Lois was doing for years, but she did it all right here. And what I found very quickly with everything I've done is you can't design one system around one person. You have to have a safe plan and this database allows us to back it up, so.
Last question, I'll leave you alone.
Please.
All right, when you're doing intake or in the system, are you also able to see what type of government assistance they're receiving? Is that full disclosure on that? Sure, that's involved in Unite Us, but through Social Security, probably yes, you can.
And that would be a connection, that would be, and this is something I'm, I'm trying to, I'm very boots on the ground, so I like working with the families directly. But what I'm seeing is I'm not working the system, sorry, I'm not working the system with them, I'm supporting them and working the system. So, you know, for example, if someone needed, if I needed that information or I can go to social services and that would be another resource that we can utilize.
We're not trying to take over, take away from any nonprofit. We're just trying to stream, get it more, we get a lot of meetings and it's always, we discuss things and nothing, we all leave and I have great ideas, but nothing's ever, the next meeting, we have another meeting and nothing ever takes off from it. So I feel like by having the coordinator's position, this will help when it hasn't run since we, since we started with that. It's not just us, it's a cumulative effort. So I don't want anyone to think that we're trying to close a nonprofit down, because this is a resource. And that's good, that's good because again, it, it's all about relationships and it would be a shame if people bypassed those relationships and just go straight to the coordinator. Our goal is to get as many nonprofits to buy in to this position to feed this information and help them as well.
Right, yeah, and hopefully, you know, there's a lot of great organizations that people aren't aware of and don't know. So if someone can send them directly to one person and then you can refer them to those organizations.
And one thing too, we, I want, one thing too is I see we don't have anybody living and breathing in Page County. I don't say from Page County, but that's representing Page County. So we have other organizations that get a lot of money off grants for Page County statistics. And the money, we don't know where it all goes to. So I know some money goes to a local hotel, we don't know how much, well, I know how much, but I don't know how much is spent towards somebody needing help, you know, just giving a lump sum to, to give rooms out. But then you might have a rise or Page One paying for a room, which this, the person may have already got the money for some of that. So I want somebody to, I like to have somebody in Page County that represents Page County for that.
And I'll say one more thing too, you know, it brings accountability to those organizations as well. You know, if they, I've called, they, they told me to call this person, I've called, I've called, I've called, I can't get through. You know, it allows us then to go to that organization and say, hey, and I've sent four referrals to you and I, no one's heard anything back. You know, what can we do there? So kind of help those organizations strengthen as well. Any more questions?
Counsel, anybody else?
I'll just say I'm glad to see this effort and as Bo had shared, yes, he and I talked about this, it's been quite some time ago. I'll just say, I'm glad to see this effort and, and, um, as Bo had shared, yes, he and I talked about this, it's been quite some time ago. I was involved with the, um, Shenandoah Alliance for Shelter. And so the previous director was Sheila and served on the board. And they had a program, and they were the first point of entry in Shenandoah County. And so anyone who needed assistance had to go there. And then, yes, that she would, um, use the resource network and, and, you know, um, kind of hold their hand, if you will, through that. And it involved, the requirement for the participant or the consumer was that they had to have credit canceling, they had to seek employment, to have gainful employment, all the things. And so it worked really well over there, and that's, I think, in our conversation, Bo and myself was talking and I was sharing with him about how that, you know, we really needed to, um, get on board with this. And to speak to the monies, um, from other counties, yes, I know that they, that organization was one who would receive regional funding for homelessness and shelters. Because ours, being strictly for females, there was funding, they were receiving for families and males. Um, and so it'll be good if you guys can kind of start going after some of those grant dollars as well.
Yes, yes.
But yeah, definitely got to be more than one full-time position.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
This is kind of where we're at now, it's kind of the pilot program, so.
Other organizations, have you kind of made contact with the big people under that umbrella, what their thoughts are on that?
Well, we're kind of working that out now, we're kind of starting, it's actually our, we're starting the presentation with, um, with reaching out to other organizations. I think I, I met with 15 pastors, uh, last Thursday, uh, they're all willing to, definitely, it's exciting to hear about, you know, maybe get something going that. And that's like I say, it's, it's unifying the entire process instead of everybody wondering, who do I give to? And not saying, don't give to, but now we have somebody we can call and say, what's, what's the process, what's the progress of, or you know, who, how's this organization doing? And y'all feel better on relieving or, or releasing or donating money to. So I think all the pastors I've talked to, which has probably been a 30 total, um, and I'm getting ready to do it in front of the council again, taking her with me. Uh, mine's more just been a sit-down, drink coffee type deal. So far, so far, it's been a great, uh, everybody's received it well, I'm excited about it, so. And actually, I think we're going to do the county supervisor's meeting as well soon, so we have some buying there that was, we did in front of the Rotary.
Yes.
Or no, the Ruins.
Rotary, Rotary, yep, yep.
Anyway, so, yeah, so it's been received well, but I don't want to take up any more y'all's time, but thank you.
I'm hearing this is a call, a call for action, is what I'm hearing you say. Only thing I can think of from the town perspective is we can identify who we shut the water off on. I don't know if we can do anything budget-wise right now, but I guess, I guess I would need suggestions of what you think the town should be doing or could be doing.
Well, I think we reapproach, um, I'm trying to get the position funded, uh, by donation and, and breaking it down to, you know, the, the town's giving a percentage and the county giving a percentage. Um, and I know PACA was here to approach you guys because I think one of their positions are, so it's basically, this would be run through PACA. So I guess the selling point, whenever you get to that point, would be to donate to PACA, uh, to fund the position, so.
Right, but I think that would be great is, I mean, if there's, if that's a possibility is to get those people who are, you know, having their utility shut off and things like that, you know, just.
I hear it's the same people a lot of times over and over.
Well, it is, we're trying to break that cycle.
Right.
Where they're not expecting that somebody to pay the water bill, that they're doing something, you know, having a network with like, say, employment opportunities. Anderson Doors hiring six, um, Prim Door, she just got, was it Prim Door?
Yep.
Prim Door, she's got an individual job, uh, there. Uh, we've been working together, getting individual housing, getting into apartments, which I think she's done. Uh, so, but he's also working, you know, he was working three jobs, I think he had to cut back one job to get a more full-time job. But, you know, yeah, it's just reaching out to those and, and, and.
And I think, you know, even on the intake, one of the questions that I've asked, which I think is very important, is do you want help? Because I think, you know, if people don't want it, it's not going to work. And then really identifying what does, what does help look like to you? You know, again, it's not someone doing it for you, but it's someone teaching you and helping you build and learn how to budget and, you know, more financial literacy and helping you kind of get stable yourself instead of just holding you up.
This concept isn't new, this is, a lot of counties have the same position or positions. So some of them run through churches, some of them run through the government agency, uh, we just felt it was better to keep it a nonprofit where it's no stigma or election comes up and a new elected official wants to get rid of the position or anything to do with law enforcement because a lot of people aren't going to come to us, so. But we want to be a resource.
I also want to commend you all for the fact that law enforcement and public safety is a big part of being at the table for this. Because I mean, if we don't make sure people's needs are ministered to up here, like down here, you've got to take them in the back of that car.
This will help us tremendously if we get people out of the street and get work.
Yeah.
And help themselves, you know?
I mean, that's public safety.
That's a big deal.
Costs us all, so.
All right, anybody else? Ms. Alter, Chief Cook, thank you all for being here.
Thank you so much.
Much success and keep us informed, please. All right, Ms. Elliott. We rate downtown initiatives.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, Get Downtown, Get Down, huge success again this year, it was so good. Um, Jennifer, Ryan, and that crew are amazing. I mean, we are just so blessed to have them, I mean, because it was hot out there, so, but it was really good, so that was great. So the big thing that LDI has going on right now is our Transition Strategies Workshop that's going to be this Wednesday. Thursday, we'll be holding it here in Council Chambers National and Virginia Main Street will be here. So I'm excited about this process to see what we can do to better improve our already awesome downtown. Any of you that can be here, and I know some of you are out of town and that, but if you can be here around 2 o'clock, they would like to meet our elected officials and get feedback and input from you guys, so if you, and that will be from like 2 to 2:45. So we won't take up too much of your time, so if you can do that. And then we are, uh, hot on the heels of working on the Sunflower Festival, the response for that has been amazing. Uh, vendors and food trucks, it's been really, really good, so, and we're going to be adding some more things to that event this year, so that's looking, that's coming along really well. And I can't believe we're already at July the 10th, where, I mean, it's crazy at how fast everything is going by. So we've just got, um, a lot of good things happening.
Thank you for what you're doing.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the, uh, Fourth of July event was just spectacular, I mean, just huge crowds of people, I don't think you've ever seen more. Everything was very well done.
I was, and it didn't happen on the street, it was all on the greenway, I thought that was a stroke of genius. What happened to the cruise inn?
Well, I'll tell you what happened, so, and I've learned a lot about cruise inns during this process, so that's good, but we're ready for next year. So what happened with our cruise inn is that we asked people to register. And the reason that we did is because we were closing, um, from West Main, the bridge up to Hawksville Street. We were going to close that section where we could support about 70 vehicles. So what I have found out is that people that do cruise inns do not register. They wake up and if the sun is shining, they go to the cruise inn. Well, that's a problem when you're looking at street closures and DJs and food trucks and all the working parts that we had involved in ours. So our hope is to, next year, to do it, but have it at the park and ride, host it at the park and ride. That way people can show up, they can park, they're still on the greenway, we can still have a food truck and a DJ and that type of thing. But we won't have to worry about street closure. Because, you know, at drop dead time, we had five registrations. You can't close the streets for five cars, we just couldn't do it. And I've had, had a lot of cruise inn people reach out to me and explain to me, this is how it works, so that's good to know. So that's kind of, but we're going to try it again for next year, yeah, because I think it'd be a cool thing to have, yeah.
Online registration with that group doesn't really.
I found that out too.
Right, right, I could get.
I've been fussed at a little bit, but it's okay, but it's a learning curve.
Really?
It's a learning curve, so it's okay. So, but no, we're going to try for it again next year and try to do it again, and so, and I'm, I think by doing it at the park and ride, we will, I think, have success with it. And again, we're not asking PD to shut the streets down, we're not worrying about all of those things, so.
Any update on veterans banners?
Yes, sir, working on that, my, I'm working with the ladies at the VFW Auxiliary. We, I was at a meeting out there last Tuesday, or excuse me, last Wednesday. And we are in the process of figuring out where we can put them. Because obviously the light poles and the electric poles are out of question. So now we're trying to figure out some things that we, or places that we can put them where they'll be displayed, but yet displayed safely. You know, one of the options that we are thinking about, you know how the flags or American flags go around our national monument in DC? Imagine banners going around the singing tower, the same idea of that. But again, that's a lot of people that have to be involved in that, but that's a thought that we've had. We've even had the thought of putting them around Inlon Park. So we've had some thoughts and, uh, places to put them, it's just a matter of getting the permission, making sure that it's feasible, keeping them cost-effective for the veterans' families. So, and we're also looking at another company that does veterans' banners as well to see what their offering would be. But we haven't given up on the project, we definitely want to make this a reality because I think it would be a nice addition to our town.
And I know we got to talk about it a little bit, but I also, in similar thinking to what you're saying, I mean, since Bo at the last meeting said that there haven't been instances of vandalism on the banners that are for the seniors on that fencing that's near the, uh, Carol lot. I mean, that, that could be a good place, it's very visible, not a lot of foot traffic through there.
But, I mean, I just think that property in a whole, because there's, there's a lot of rooms, I think we, because I agree with everyone, I think we're going to have a lot of people want to have a banner for their veteran. And if we could have that out there, I think it would be very attractive, um, not only for our locals, but also for our visitors, it would look very nice. Um, and that's kind of, you know, one part of entering into our town, what a nice, what a nice thing to see when you come into a small town. So we definitely want to continue to pursue it and make it a reality for Luray. So that's, our goal is just to work all those things out and see what we can come up with.
Anybody else have questions for Jackie?
For the Main Street Strategies, um, so I already shared with you, I won't be able to, to be there.
Right.
Traveling, um, is, will there be an opportunity to provide feedback after, like after they're gone?
Oh, absolutely, yes, yes.
Yeah, is there a questionnaire or where do you?
Um, there is, we are putting, there's going to be data from this meeting that will be put together. And like, and then they'll be giving that back to me and then I'll be able to share that with council. Yeah, I'll make sure that you guys get that information once I get it. Because this is kind of like a, you know, we're sitting down and coming up with a plan and then we'll put the plan together and then, kind of like what we do with the Capstone Project, if you will. Yeah, and we did a survey with this also, we sent out a survey for the trans, um, for the Transformation Strategies. We did have a survey that went out and we had a fair amount of response to that. So we have that data to work from as well.
And the day for council to attend would be Wednesday?
Wednesday at 2, just Wednesday, yeah, I just need you here on Wednesday. I'm asking council and elected officials to be there, and then I'm also asking on that day in the, after your guys' session, uh, Main Street stakeholders to attend around 3, and property owners to give feedback, yeah.
Counsel, anybody else for Jackie, any question? Jackie, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
For what you do, we appreciate it. All right. Mr. Burke, public hearing?
Uh, yes, sir, council's requested to conduct a, uh, public hearing, receive citizen input and to consider approval of the financing for the remotely red water meter program and the water treatment plant SCADA. Council's previously authorized the use of $550,000 of the town's ARPA allocation for the project. Remaining funding for the water meter project and upgrades to the town SCADA is to be financed through the Blue Ridge Bank through an $855,000 general obligation bond to be fully repaid by August 15th, 2033.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing, no one has signed up to speak, does anyone here tonight want to speak on this? Mr. Burke, you have any correspondence?
No, sir.
Emails, phone calls, nothing?
No, sir.
Hearing nothing, I will close the public hearing, counsel, your pleasure.
Just a question, uh, the, the first two years are interest only payments?
Yes, sir, the, the intent for that is it's, it's like a construction loan because we'll be accruing funds. It's not like, once council approves this, we're going to go out and pull the full 855. We anticipate time for both the, uh, construction, uh, installation of the water meters as well as the implementation of the, uh, SCADA.
Okay, then you start paying the principal, what, the two years?
And it, it doesn't have to be, if we complete early, we can then transition to the, to the full loan, but it's, it gives us that flexibility.
Okay, I was just curious.
Anybody else?
I move that the council adopts the resolution approving the issuance of $855,000 general bank qualified bond for an amount not to exceed $855,000 for the remotely red water meter program and the water treatment plant SCADA system as presented. And I further move that the council authorize the mayor, the town manager, the town treasurer, and the town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to obtain to fulfill this general obligation bond.
Seconded.
Seconded.
All right, any more discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pennett?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, Board of Zoning Appeals recommendation?
Yes, your council's requested to consider a recommendation of appointment to the Circuit Court, uh, for the Board of Zoning Appeals to replace the position vacated by Doc Brown.
Counsel, any discussion? Anyone want to make a motion?
I have a motion, Mayor. I move that the Town Council recommend appointment of Steve Cade to the Town's Board of Zoning Appeals to the Page County Circuit Court.
Just a second.
Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pennett?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke?
Council's requested to consider award of the installation of netting beneath the West Main Street Bridge to limit bird roosting to exceptional wildlife removal. Bird roosting, birds roosting along the, the West Main Bridge has resulted in significant impact to the bridge abutment and the greenway. Efforts to deter roosting through bird spikes has not been successful. Staff from the Parks and Recreation Department have identified a solution that will install this anti-bird netting along the bridge to limit access by birds. And the proposed netting will have a 10-year manufacturer's warranty and a two-year installation warranty. The cost proposal for the bridge, uh, for this, uh, project is $9,043.96 with funding coming from the Parks Improvements Project's budget as well as General, General Properties Maintenance and Repairs Budgets.
Any discussion?
This is a great idea. I'd like to make the motion. I move the council approve the award of the bird-nating installation beneath the West Main Street Bridge to exceptional wildlife removal in an amount not to exceed $9,043.96 as presented.
Second that.
Any discussion? We were pretty good at the work session, didn't we? All right, Danielle?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pennett?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
You know when they start?
Uh, Ryan has been in communication with them. Um, we think, if it all goes well, end of July, beginning of August, but we've not, uh.
It's, whenever they get it in their system, they get, okay.
Yes, sir.
Do you know how long it takes to put one up?
They said it's less than a week.
Good.
And are our staff going to finish cleaning, take the spikes out or any of that kind of stuff?
Yes, sir, I think we're responsible to prep it, so we will be removing the spikes and, and, um.
Pressure wash.
Pressure wash, I really hope. So we don't immortalize the, uh.
Hopefully it's not too bad, it was pressure washed on the third.
I think it's great.
All right, uh, Mr. Burke, facility use policy?
Yes, sir, council's requested to consider the policy concerning non-governmental use of certain nonprofit, not non-public meeting space. Uh, the conference room at the visitor's center has previously been used after hours by various groups and organizations following discussions with our insurance provider and the town attorney. Uh, the town has developed a policy, uh, for both the Train Depot Meeting Room and Council Chambers. Uh, and basically it would not apply to our building tenants or those that provide, uh, building services to the building. Effectively, the folks that maintain our train museum would also have use of, of that room.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I have a few things. Um, so I'd asked last meeting if this had been shared with the chamber, and I've since had a conversation, um, with Gina who advised that she had not seen this proposed, um, facilities use policy. So I asked her what if any, I shared this with her and asked what if any concerns that she had or would this prohibit their operations? As I know historically, they've used that conference room for their members and really any business, whether they're membership-based or not. Because apparently that was the terms of the funding that was received for the Train Depot. That it could not be limited to chamber members, it had to be open, um, for anyone to use. And she shared with me that she has received quite a bit of concerns from not just chamber members, but also community organizations. Um, she mentioned the soccer team, I guess maybe their board uses it. Um, the Small Business Development Center, who is a nonprofit, uses it to provide counseling and services to our small business community. And I often use it more than once a month and. And in reading item number two, that second there, I see where it's reduced, I think it's at item number two, where it's reduced to once a month? No, number three. Reservations are limited to one application per month. So, that's not really advantageous for the work of the SBDC, who, again, they've received funding from our community to provide no-call services to our businesses. That is a concern. And some of the businesses that have used it in the past, Intelligence is one, for example, uses it for their... So, they are a hub and business who works out of the annex, and they do not have a conference space, so they use it for their personnel evaluations and for employment, for career fairs, and things of that nature. So, she had several examples of various folks that she has heard from, and kind of the habitual use and the desired use going forward. So, you know, I share all that to say, I'm concerned if we're being maybe a little short-sighted with the tenant that we have in there, and I'd be interested in hearing, kinda what are we hoping to accomplish by adopting the policy as it's being proposed?
Well, the need for the policy arose because the chamber was allowing outside organizations to use that facility after hours, not having any representation of themselves to control the use, which is a concern to the town as well as to Versa. So, the primary issue that we have is uncontrolled, unrestricted, after-hours use. And we've... I've had conversations with Gina that, again, during normal hours, when there is someone in the building, is not a problem. The way that it's been crafted, if LDI, the chamber, or the train folks wanted to use it after hours, again, because they have a connection and a relationship with the building, that's not a problem. If Gina would... If Gina reserves it for one of their members, and there is a representative from the chamber that stays after hours, again, based on the way that it is crafted, that can also be accomplished. The main issue that we've had was just allowing any outside organization after hours, and...
I thought it was more like one organization maybe using it as a... An outside organization was just using it like as a regular meeting spot.
Well, the main issue, again, from... At least from a perspective of how the building is open after hours and not having any representative, that's the main issue, is trying to control the after hours. If there is a concern about allowing, you know, up to one meeting a week, that's not a problem. We can definitely accommodate that. The main thrust of what was developed was to prioritize the use by the town, by the chamber, by LDI, so that those organizations that have a vested interest in that building could continue to use that building. Any secondary requests could be accommodated, but there need... We desired, we hoped, that this would allow council and any organization that's requesting it to understand what the expectations are.
Sure. I think it's good to have a policy, so I don't... I'm not... I don't frown upon the, you know, the efforts that's been applied here and the intent as much as I think that it seems very restrictive, and perhaps there is some activity that's occurred that I'm not aware of, but, you know, I served on the chamber for nine years, and during that time, we used it often after hours for everything from United Way to...
EDA used here.
Yes, to the EDA, to, you know, meeting with realtors and lenders in that area to talk about hotel feasibility. I mean, I can tell you many a times that I've had meetings after hours, that we had access to it because there was a key, like the combination lock on the outside, and a keypad, the security, that were... The way I understood is that those items were provided and put into place so that we could have access after hours without demanding that there would be staff on site. I hear what you're saying about, right, the potential for liability, as far as just someone being destructive on the premises or negligent, but I don't know that that's happened. And I'm not saying that just because it hasn't happened, that we leave it unattended and open to not assume, right, some good protocol to prevent it. I'm not suggesting that either. But, and in the number four, it says normal business hours, that it's specific to normal business hours, not after hours. So, again, I'm not opposed to adopting a facility use policy. I'm just not so sure that this is... I think this seems very prohibitive to the tenant and to other organizations who's used the facility.
Well, again, it's not... It doesn't restrict any of the tenant use.
Right. But it does for members. It does to her members.
Well, again, if any member, any chamber, you know, Gina or her staff were to stay, and it was a chamber meeting, that can be accommodated.
Even after hours, because it says, again, number four, normal business hours.
Let me see.
It does say that.
And she's had members who are... Have said that frankly, it's the talent chip being one. I mean, that's really, for them, why it's... There's value in that membership, because it provides a space that they otherwise do not have. And I think about some of our remote work folks who have used the space as well.
It means it all... Is it all just based on this kinda one situation? Is that sort of what started it?
Well, no. We've had a few instances of... We had a sink that was pulled off in the bathroom available to the meeting room. No one knew who pulled it off. It could have been during the day, but it could have happened at night when there wasn't anyone there. We've had a few other instances. Thankfully, there's not been anything... There's been minor issues. There's not been catastrophic, but being... In talking with our insurance provider, it is the town's building. And ultimately, anything that happens at that building, we are ultimately responsible for. So, if the town... And again, this is a policy. If the town desired to simply keep the doors open 24/7, that is your option. However, I don't know that Versa would be very receptive to that. So, somewhere between wide open and what's been presented, that's available to council.
Well, it's not wide open. It's not wide open now.
Yeah. I think that's a stretch. It's not that, yeah, not wide open. I don't know that there's been too many meetings that are terribly late. But even like number seven, the food and beverage thing, that the town manager has to approve, food and beverage, I just think that, again, your talents and talents are better used than having to monitor applications for whether or not they can have donuts and coffee at their meetings. Not to be facetious, but...
You gotta have insurance. You gotta have insurance.
Well, can we do... I'll just say, from what I see with this, and I'm seeing both sides, I really am, I believe that, yes, rules do need to be in place, and with the town's responsibility and our insurance liability, everything associated with that building being the town's building, rules, standards, requirements do need to be in place. A couple of the things, such as what you've mentioned, Stephanie, if we could tweak or do some work there to give it that flexibility for some of the things that have been working in the past that are not a problem, and we want to see continue, but, you know, I see... Personally, I see the majority of this needing to be in place, and maybe we take those few things that have been mentioned, and we tweak that or soften it a little bit to give a little flexibility there, but I believe we do need some rules and regulations in place to protect ourselves as far as the town.
Yeah, I would just talk to... Talk to Gina and sit down and maybe go over something that just y'all can agree with. I mean, I don't think everybody... If a third party comes, they have to have $500,000 insurance policy with the town as additionally insured. I just...
I didn't realize at the very beginning, it's this chamber room also. I didn't know people would want to use this room at night.
Well, our thought was to, if it was available, and we've not... We've had some of the town meetings here.
Right.
We've also accommodated during the day, some other organizations have used it. And again, it's not a problem. It can be made available to different...
We have policies for use of the things at Lake Airhead, we have policies for everything else we have. I can see we need one.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm not against the policy. I agree. And there are things in here that makes perfect sense. Number 11, no smoking, possessing alcohol, gambling. I agree. All that's good to have. But I think some of it, it's just... It's a little rigid, and I just feel like it's kinda back in the center of the corner. It's... I mean, again, I'm one vote, but I would make a motion that we do not accept this policy, and we send it back for edits, and...
Yeah, work with Gina on it, and see if it comes up a kinda little... Well, just that y'all are on the same page with something, and make it where people, if outside folks want to use it, they can use, but here are the basic rules. And you gotta have a staff person there, or you, you know, or whatever it may be.
And specific to the depot, the problem that we've had is that there is an alarm system. And when there's non-staff there, the alarm is left off overnight. And that, again, that does pose an issue for both the town as well as Versa. That's... That was the main issue that Versa wanted, was to make sure that there was a responsible staff tenant that could ensure that the alarm was reset after any after-hour meeting. So, that's one of the main concerns, is, you know, we've got a...
Which is higher, yes.
But we can... I don't mind talking with Gina and Jackie and seeing if there's things that we can do.
Does the museum and the meeting room have their separate alarms, or is it all one alarm?
It's all one alarm, unfortunately.
No, the meeting room is separate. You can access that meeting room. It's two separate ones.
It's the alarm. Yeah, there's access to it, but the alarm is the whole building.
But the alarm covers the whole facility, not just...
Yeah.
It's set up in zones. So, if you're having a meeting, or if you're having a board meeting in there, they set up the zone that's in the train station where my office is located, and they shut the door, and then you have to exit through the conference room door. And when you go out, then you set the code to rearm that room.
That room only.
So, they have it zoned off.
And it's locked off, so no one has access to anything beyond the conference room, when they're in the conference room. So, you know, they could break windows, look the TV off the wall, and apparently the sink.
They can always do that.
There is damage that can happen, for sure, but they do not have access to the other part of the facility.
There's no bathrooms off the conference room, correct?
Just that single use, which apparently I didn't know about the bathroom. Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Well, we can check.
I just want to table that till next time. All right, Steve, you want to go on to code amendment, refer Article 4 District Regulation, Short-Term Rentals?
Yes, sir. At your last work session, council discussed options or desire to evaluate Appendix A zoning Article 4 District Regulations regarding short-term rentals, and there were some ideas, evaluation, to include the appropriateness of denser zoning districts, minimum lot size considerations, other recommendations that the planning commission might consider. So, council's requested to refer evaluation of district regulations to the planning commission.
Sounds good. Any discussion on that?
I don't think it hurts to have them evaluate, so... Makes sense.
I move the town council refer evaluations of Appendix A zoning Article 4 District Regulations to the planning commission to review the appropriate locations for short-term rentals.
Seconded.
Any more discussion? Danielle?
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Watkins, you have anything for us?
No, sir, nothing for tonight.
Okay. Counsel, anything else y'all want to bring up? I really don't have anything. We sent around a... Steve sent around an email asking if we were interested in having a special meeting, and I got one yes and one maybe depending on the date, so I assume we don't want to have a special meeting. Is that your overall thoughts?
Was that for a special use permit?
It was a special use permit to operate a children's daycare out of the Lutheran Church over on East Main Street. The applicant requested consideration of a special meeting so that she could open prior to August.
Is the planning commission's hearing?
Is scheduled for Wednesday.
Was... I thought the issue was that she couldn't... Like, they wouldn't issue her occupancy, certificate of occupancy, until we had... Until she had the SEU.
No, we've already addressed that.
Okay. So, at this point, the only purpose would just be to expedite her access and to start.
Has she submitted proper licensing and all that?
We've not...
Of the facility?
Well, we've...
Or we haven't gotten that far yet?